White House to the White of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I guess we'll start with the board reorganization. Um, anybody else in the presidency? President?
I am not. I have way too much going.
I think you should do it, President. I don't, I don't disagree, but I'm not ready.
Well, the only way to do it is to jump in there.
I nominate Wes.
Go ahead.
I nominate Jonah.
I'm not making the deciding vote, so you guys are gonna have to decide that on your own.
I'll make a motion to appoint Wes as the president.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Nay. No, I'll do vice if you don't want to do Wes this year.
I will make a motion that Jonah becomes Vice President for twenty twenty five.
I second that.
All those in favor? Aye.
Wes, do you really want me to write that? Okay. I was gonna say, because I'll put it in there if you want, if you want to oppose.
Well, and then this next year. Um.
I appreciate being a board member.
Well, I appreciate everyone's confidence in me. Appreciate that, and I got bigger issues. Yeah. Um, moving on to liaison appointments, I guess. Um, yeah.
Our liaison.
Oh, ours. Our department. Any changes anybody for liaison departments?
I make a motion that we change it, and my suggestion is that Terry take the fire department, you take the street department, and I take the police department. I'm gonna keep housing for right now. I have my same ideas, but to that.
Okay.
So, I got the fire department.
You're Terry, Terry's liaison for the fire department, you're the liaison for the town's street department, you're the liaison for the police department, and I keep housing at this.
Street and utilities, right?
Yeah, and school also, um, mine also.
The what?
The school. Triton School District.
Didn't know we had a liaison for Triton School District. Okay.
All right. Moving on with that. I'm satisfied with the appointments with the department heads, so, um, anybody discussion for the department heads?
Nope, I make a motion that we approve the department heads as we do.
I second.
All favor say aye. Motion Terry is to keep the department. Congratulations.
I do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um. Moving on to, is any additions or corrections for the minutes for last meeting, December tenth, two thousand and twenty four?
I make a motion except for that.
On December tenth, you go to twenty one?
I second that, I saw that.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Um, moving in, no old business, moving in a new business stuff, Vicki at Dustin's Place. If you wouldn't mind picking up loud.
Yeah, do you want me to come up?
Yeah, by that thing.
All the way to the mic?
Yeah.
It's a lot. I'm really loud. How would I stand here?
That's it.
Okay. Uh, good evening. I am Vicki Brown with Dustin's Place. I know a couple of you, but I don't know all of you, so I'll do a brief history so we can kind of be on the same page, and then get into my evening. Um, sorry. Dustin's Place is a children's grief center, and we provide grief support to kids and adults after the death of a person in their life. Um, we are a nonprofit, five oh one C three, and we do not charge for any of our services. We are about, not about, we are five years old. Um, so we just celebrated five years of grief support within and throughout Marshall County. Um, we do this in a Monday evening group in Plymouth every other Monday night. We average about eighty-five individuals at our Monday night groups, and then throughout Marshall County and Saint Joe County in the schools. So we are in, um, fifteen schools every single week, servicing approximately a hundred and twenty-five students who have experienced the death in their life during the school day at the school buildings. Um, Triton is one of our schools. We do both the elementary school, um, and hopefully the high school this year, um, as well as they are one of our crisis team partners. So when a student or a faculty member dies, they call us in, we do that acute grief care, um, immediately following that death as well. Um, Dustin is my late husband, so he died in two thousand sixteen when we were thirty-four years old, leaving me a single mom widow of three very young children. Uh, Kathan was six, Liliana was five, and Dean was eleven months old. Um, through my personal journey as a young widow and parent of grieving children, I came to realize the lack of resources for kids. Um, I could go anywhere. There was an abundance of grief support for me, whether I wanted to pay for it, whether I wanted to go for free, whether I wanted faith-based, not faith-based, I could go anywhere. Um, but the best I could find for my children is, they can come, we have child care while you go to group. I was a teacher, and that, and my husband was in social work, and that was not sufficient. I wanted something to help my kids more than childcare while mom gets the support she needs. Um, I sought individual therapy. It was a ten-month waitlist for my daughter to get into therapy. Um, also unacceptable. Um, and it was over a hundred dollars per session for now a single mom. Not acceptable. Um. After a short brief of time, we started attending another children's grief center up in Goshen, and, uh, it was that experience where I came to realize exactly what my children needed. After night one, we come out, and I'm like, all right, Lily, how did it go? And she talks nonstop for about three minutes about how amazing this place was. Um, Lily is a rainbow and unicorn-minded child, though, so not good judgment, but she loved it. Um, and I asked my son, all right, Kathan, how did it go? And he says, Mom, there's another boy there, and his dad died too. And that sentence changed my entire perspective on what my kids needed. I was so focused on fixing them that I didn't recognize they just needed to know they were alone. They needed to know that there were other kids whose dad had died, other sons who were going to be playing baseball without their dad as a coach, other kids being raised by a single mom. Through that acknowledgement, and then my, um, stepping into children's grief, we opened Dustin's Place. I spent the summer of two thousand nineteen out in Portland, Oregon, getting certified in children's grief, um, and nonprofit work. Um, we opened Dustin's Place on January sixth of two thousand twenty, and in five years, we have served nine hundred and four individuals in peer-to-peer grief support. Um, the need is huge. It is, one in every ten children in the state of Indiana will experience the death of a parent or a sibling before they turn eighteen. We don't have stats for grandparents, neighbors, classmates, teachers. We only have stats for parents and siblings, and we know that one in every ten, that's two to three kids in every single classroom, grieving the death of a parent or a sibling, and yet we're only the fourth children's grief center in the entire state of Indiana. Um, with that knowledge comes the acknowledgement then, the need is huge. Um, we are exploding. We have been blasted with a beautiful space, um, however, we've outgrown it. Um, we are only able to use it every other Monday night because it's not our space. Um, but the need is Saturday mornings. We need preschool classes, preschool during the daytime. We need adult groups during the daytime, so we don't have adults driving in the evening to our groups. We need suicidal ideation groups because the mental health of our kids right now is super at risk, and, um, they are experiencing traumatic lives right now, and, and there is no place for them to go and be supported through those suicidal ideations. We need grief support, um, at a greater, um, measure than what we can currently do. Um, so, about six months ago, um, the Hollums were gifted us the upstairs of the Life Flex. It is a sixty-five-hundred-square-foot shell space in the upstairs of that building, um, for a dollar. And so for a dollar a year, we are able to rent it, we are able to have a children-specific grief center in Marshall County. We will continue the school groups because we know that transportation is an issue, and not everyone will be able to come to our building, but we also know that by creating weekend groups, by creating summer groups, by continuing our summer camp that we had, um, six, nearly sixty kids at, we can reach even more kiddos. Um, so what we are asking is we are going into the communities that we serve, that we currently provide, um, grief support for their, um, residents, and asking them to support this, um, building project, to look at their opioid funds, to look at their mental health funds of their county, or of their city, and, um, support this because what we know is postvention is prevention with this. If we come into these kiddos who've experienced something traumatic like the death of a, of a mom or a dad, and we give them this postvention support, we are preventing substance use. We are teaching them how to have proper coping skills so that they don't turn to substances. We are preventing, um, incarceration. We are preventing lifelong, um, impactful things. Sorry. Uh, and so, what I did was I looked at the numbers of percentages of where our families are coming from, the, the percentage of the kiddos that we are served, and then I took our money that we need to raise. This is what it's going to cost us for the building. It's around seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to renovate our building that we're currently looking at, that we were gifted, so that we can have ten meeting rooms, a dining hall, a art expression room, a sensory expression room, if anyone else wants one. Um, a sensory expression room, a volcano room where they can be physical, as well as, um, ten meeting rooms. Um. Yeah, okay. So that's the budget for the bid sheet. This is where our budget where we're currently at on the seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, you will see how much we've asked each entity for, and tonight we are asking Bourbon to look in their budget and see if they can find ten thousand dollars to help us get to the final number. We are two hundred, two hundred and two thousand dollars short of our current budgets. You're welcome. So tonight, I'm coming to you as the town council to request a look at your budget to see if you could contribute ten thousand dollars to the renovation and the mental health of the kiddos we serve. I do apologize, this is super tiny. I can't find another way to make it. I do have reading glasses in my purse, if anyone wants a pair. I found this year I have.
Do we have funds for such a thing as this?
Well, normally, you know, these requests are made before our budget. We go through in the summer, so we do not have them allocated, um, at the moment. So, um, I mean, there's a couple of things that is gonna be asked later about requests that I don't know what your answers are gonna be, so I'm not saying that there might not be some funding that can be split.
Is there something we'd want to table on?
I, I would think it would be in our best interest to table it at the moment, and then.
That's really truthfully, probably the honest way to handle it.
Thanks, Greg. I'll tell you, I've turned many, many kids to you.
Thank you, thank you.
And then when I came by there last night, you couldn't even park in the church parking lot. I mean, it was like nowhere.
Yes.
How much, I'm just asking. Are we expected or believe that we're gonna get the opioid fund this year?
And you know, that is, um, I don't know for sure, but, uh, if you remember that last year, um, oh, and I cannot think of the lady's name. Was it Linda? No. Well, they requested our opioid funds, but never provided the paperwork for me to pay for them, so that money was never distributed to them because I asked them for specific bills and all, or, you know, I have to have an invoice and all that along with their federal ID number and all that stuff, and they never ever gave it. So that money is still sitting there, so. Give me your papers.
I didn't change mine. Your federal number right now.
So the restricted funds right now has almost seventy-nine hundred dollars in it. So.
Do you need an answer tonight?
I do not, and I respect.
I think.
I respect a table over a flat no tonight.
Yeah.
I'm thankful for that.
I, I think, I, and I don't feel that it's a flat no, I think we need to find the funds in the right area.
I think we'll contribute, we'll just have to figure out what fund.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I do, I appreciate that. I greatly appreciate that. Thank you.
Jenna Carter. I have thing, all kinds of.
Job, job well done, Vicki.
Thank you, thank you. It's, it's an honor.
I have heard resounding appreciation from families that I know that used you.
And I know, I know you worked with my sister too at the elementary, and, yeah, I know that they been very, that's been, and unfortunately Triton has had several.
Yeah.
But they've lost, um, parents this year, and it's been rough on those kids, I know that, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we got friends that did parade by camps for years up in Michigan, so.
Hmm.
Went up there and.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Thank you.
So, yeah, I will, I, I will send them out something, and then we'll get back with you on that Vicki, okay?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I spelled your name wrong in the, on the agenda.
That's okay, everyone knows.
Be in there, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so Jonah motioned to table, who's gonna second that?
Um, moving on to, um, Michigan, uh, the, 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 a lot of things, okay. Do you have a chance to look at that?
I did. Well, I mean, for the most part, I thought it looked fine. Um, the only true vision, though, that I saw that this seemed kind of ambiguous to me, and I don't know if you guys can tell me or not worried about it, but, um, provision number six on security, you know, it said site owner, um, me, Bourbon, be responsible for installing and maintaining physical security strategies, has agreed to in discussion with MACOG, that may include lighting, signs, station design, et cetera. Um, you know, that, that seems pretty open-ended to me. I don't know what that means. I don't know if you guys know what that means. I think, if it's me, I don't wanna know. I want some more definition to that, but were I've signed something like that.
Okay. I agree with that. I will send something to them on, on that.
Because, yeah, it seems like you might have stepped in a lot more than what you're expecting.
Almost reads like they want a facility.
Yeah, I don't know what it means.
Well, we're gonna do this, it was part of, it was part of, I was looking at, we can obviously, legally, but we got well past that sidewalk. Is that gonna be part of that, or is that gonna be a part of the, be able to do that?
Austin, next week, the, uh, email.
Everything else is okay, it's that reboot, it's, it seems like it needs to be more definite, so, like I was saying.
I make a motion that we table that.
I'll second that. I will send, I think, like a favor. And get confirmation. Um, moving on to your contract.
So, I would say, you have a question. Excuse me, um, adjusted for planning and BVA meetings. There was that expectation of how many meetings a year that you might be, was that any month? What is that?
Um.
Six months?
So, I mean, right, I mean, I basically increased, you know, it came by fifty bucks, I mean, right. It's kind of the same in previous years before the past year, there are hardly any. There might have been one or two per year, and this last year, I think I had maybe, well, not eight, maybe eight or nine or something. So, I mean, I, I increased it, you know, kind of crossed the border, it's fifty bucks extra per payment.
I, I guess my question is, are you physically gonna be here for that, or is it just gonna be on, on phone? Meeting expectations, is, is there a way to video you in? I mean, what's the expectations of moving?
So what I've said in the past, and I got to do that today, if there's a public meeting, let me know at least a week in advance, and I will be in person, present unless there's impossibility, there, there's nothing public. Typically, I, I have not been attending, but I can if, you know, there's a, I'm not reading.
Any other comments?
No, I think I would like to retain, you know, if I could tell you that, my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract from them for the white light, right?
I'll second that. Thanks, guys.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion two.
Thank you, sir, for what you did. Appreciate it for having me.
Um. Next one, moving on, unsafe building, nothing to comment.
Um, that email I sent out. Suggestion. Um, Kim, you did this prior, correct?
I had, yeah, I have served on it for, you know, how long.
Yeah, and you, you wanted to give it up, or?
No, I just sent that to you. If you guys felt that you might want Suzie to serve on that, that was, that is fine with me. I, I'm more than happy to serve on it, continuing to serve on it, but that's why I just put that out there for you guys.
You were like, I need.
No, no.
Or if you wanted to continue it, or, I mean, is there any interest to continue it?
Oh, no, I, I love serving on that board. I just thought maybe you guys wanted a different perspective, like through building and planning on it.
I'm up to one, two cents, nothing against, but, I mean, you're full-time here, you can leave during the day.
That's fine, I just thought maybe you just wanted a different, different look at it.
Position of the unsafe building.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you want to make a sign on this?
You, yeah, you sign under, where it just says there at the top, where it says something about president. Yeah, you need to sign that.
Isn't that right, the vice president?
Yeah, you, you.
Yeah, you have to, you have to be the.
You have to get that for him.
Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah. All right.
Uh, nip it in form.
Here's yours, Wes. I got the other two guys. So every year, you guys have to sign a, a release that goes and goes to the state when we are audited that shows that we've just not fired any of your relatives in the past year. And you are the only one that that pertains to, only because you work for the sheriff's department. So, um, you should have that somewhere too. No, maybe I have it. I have this one. All right, so. So you need to sign here, and then Terry and Jonah both have to sign off on that also.
So moving on to report from the department head, uh, and Burger, but first.
All right, so I need approval of claims seven thousand fifty-one to seventy-one sixty, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars.
I make, I make a motion to prove claim seventy fifty-one through seventy-one sixty, forty-seven, four hundred and seventy-one million, four hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and fifteen cents.
That would be awesome.
Add that last of them.
Um, every year also, when, um, we've had checks that have been written that are over two years old, um, we are required by the state board of the council to do a cancellation of warrants, so those total, uh, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-eight cents, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents. We'll go back to the general fund, fifty dollars and ninety-eight cents is gonna go back to the water department. So that's just a state thing that is required at the end of the year. No. So you also got the appropriation transfers, a copy of those for the end of the year. As you can see, a lot of the, um, transfers was done within the police department, and that was mainly due from our gentleman being at the academy and having to utilize paying part-time police officers on that. And then you also have copies of the end-of-the-year, um, appropriations, budgets, all of that. That shows your, our year imbalances also. Um, so I did get a request, all right, I got a bill, let's put it that way, from the Marshall County Economic Development Corporation again this year, asking for ten thousand dollars, so I'm asking for guidance on that.
Well, I think that we, when the last meeting that we had, we all agreed to pay quarterly instead of the yearly bill, um, to see that they followed through with what their commitments that they agreed to. So, this would be my recommendation, I guess, to follow through with that on the agreement of paying quarterly payment.
Unless, this is official, they asked, they're sending us a bill? I guess that would be.
That's, I mean, that's just, that's just their, that's their norm, but that's just what they do. And, you know, I know after we had the discussion with him last year, um, I don't know if you felt that you received any guidance on the last quarter of twenty twenty-four because we did pay that last quarterly payment to them in twenty twenty-four.
Well, I mean, I did go to, I, I did go to the economic, um, and, and, uh, you know, it's the same thing, housing, and they were pretty, Greg is pretty involved in the solar, not involved with us, but, um, I, I, I think it's important to stay involved, um, if not, for the knowledge sake, it's more so than in the other communities.
You, you understand that you're talking to. Oh, Greg is industrial commercial.
Yeah. Uh, to some extent, because he's getting involved, not a little bit in that, housing, bourbon. But, we had discussed with him. One, one margin. No, um. I mean, what's your thought?
I'm very good this quarter. But I wanna see some.
Well, I know we've done one quarter. I think it warrants doing another quarter, I agree with you, but just trying to see where this actually is going.
So do you just want me to ask again next quarter? Um, your thoughts at that point?
Yeah, I think that's.
Okay, so you motioned, Jonah, to pay this quarter?
And I second.
Or less.
That was just discussion.
Okay, who, well, who wants to make a motion to pay it?
I'll make a motion for a quarter.
Okay.
Oh, I'll second that, sorry, sorry.
All right. The only other thing I haven't, we really don't have anybody here, but maybe people are listening online. I know a lot of you guys have seen all of the drama and all that on Facebook about water bills, trash not getting picked up, such and such and such. So, I just want to, and I'm gonna put out a post tomorrow on Facebook, but I am not going to police those complaints on Facebook. If somebody does not call into the office, we're not taking care of it that way, so, you know.
I agree with you completely.
All right, so I just want you to know that if they actually want to have a resolution to their problem, they're gonna need to have the call in, so.
Well, and I'm gonna say, as a board member, I wasn't aware of the trash change with Borden and Stafford until it happened.
And we were not, we were not either. We basically got a piece of paper in the mail that just said that, uh, Borden and Stafford was bought out by some company out of Texas, I believe it was, and was supposed to have a meeting with, uh, one of the main people, and he never came. So, our trash contract does come up again in two thousand twenty-five, and so I'm sure as the year goes on, I will be asking for us to put that out to bid again. Um, I'm, I'm not saying that a lot of people get missed like they did with Republic. It's just that they don't go that extra mile and check in here at the office, um, like they had been doing in the past. I feel that our driver gets changed about every other week, it seems like, so, you know, when they're not used to their area or the route, it seems like. You know, when they're not used to their area or the route, it seems like people are constantly getting missed. Now, they are very good about it, if we call them on Monday and tell them that somebody's been missed, that they will come back and pick it up. But we just don't have the communication with them, um, since they've been bought out by this bigger company. I don't know what the answer is, I don't know, but we can always, yeah, I guess we'll just, we'll and later on in the year, we'll just put it out there again and see where we go from there, so.
I don't think we have much choice.
No, not at all. Yeah. I think a lot of people, as Lacy and I was, surprised when we got that little notice in the mail, so. That's all.
Keith Martin, your attorney report? You have my, copy of my report. Any issues or anything that for the board to address?
Vehicle's all going good?
Yes, sir.
Um, radios are up the correct now, we did some updating on some radios. Computers or whatever you're going to borrow.
Um, Roger, Terry, attorney report?
You have my attorney's voice in, last place, bar on Water Street. Uh, second thing is, higher rate handling, renters turn back to ten hundred sixty five twenty five.
I'll make a motion that, uh, higher rate handling and red car is, turn back to Gary twenty five. Met the individuals, it's a super nice, super nice guy, so.
And Young?
Yep.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Third thing is your community crossing grant application round one is due by the end of the month, we'll be filing here in a couple of weeks. So that'll be for our beginning for two thousand twenty five, if we do it now, we can get it done this year, if we get the second round, it'll be two thousand twenty six. It's quicker than that.
Yep. That's all I have, thank you.
One question I have that just up the speed with the board of the fellow power.
Yes, I had contact with them this week, they're still, I'm still waiting on the letter from them, from the engineers. I will make contact with them again, they were in meeting, I contacted, they were supposed to call me back.
Yeah.
I know, I know, other than that they were working on a letter, so I will get them in contact with them.
I want to email that out too.
Yes, I'll, I'll get it to you one way or the other. I will have contact with them if they have a chance to replace it.
Okay.
Where is that at?
Open.
Oh, okay. Thought we were trying to go to sunny Florida.
No, no, no.
Thanks, Doctor, everything.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Chad couldn't be here, but you said.
I got his stuff. Um, yeah, they, they had training over at Nitney Green tonight, so. Um, they had three car accidents for medic assists, one signal nine and a mutual aid structured fire with agreement during the last month. That was mixed up.
Thank you.
Um, the state commission met yesterday, all they pretty much did was elect their officers for twenty twenty five. Oh, and Amber Venice. Every four years, they're supposed to be reappointed to the committees and she is up to be a committee, so. She has agreed that she would like to stay, so if you guys feel that that's something that you would agree to, then she does.
Motion, a negative motion to reappoint. Another four years.
I will second that motion. Right.
Motion.
Um, and the board is wanting to appeal, there's been a lot of sickness in the committee, so we do not elect any officers at this time, I haven't had a. And the other thing for old business was the property on the once, finally, she did move her fence back.
It has so much better.
It does look very, very nice.
I don't know if there's anybody living there yet or?
I don't think so, she's still remodeling it.
But it did, she did.
Complied to the last time I spoke with her.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Um, Alex?
Um, as far as the current home update, um, I sent that counter offer back to her attorney, they said no. Um, so I went ahead and set it for a bench trial on February third. So we'll put in front of the judge and let him decide.
Yep.
Yep.
Did you ever hear back from the owners of the apartments?
Did not, I sent them a demand letter. I think need a day, I think I gave, they respond, so they, they still have a little bit of time to respond.
Okay.
They did go out, um, yeah, I'll double check that, but, um, yeah, we should be getting an answer back, hopefully soon.
Okay.
Anything else, Alex?
That would be it for me.
Uh, patrons comments?
We need to have a treat.
It's too cold, they canceled the ball games and all, they're all staying in, putting up. They did that early.
Council member comments?
I don't have any, other than thank you to all the people who are involved in this community and what they do, that's kind of a given, but publicly need to have that throughout.
Is there anything back on the ice machine?
No. I think we're going to just have to reach out to another company. They're just, I've called them several times again and just not heard anything back. Unfortunately, it seems to be hard to get any.
Body to work.
Body to work.
Well, there's ice out there.
Yeah, exactly, they can just go out in their yard and grab some.
Is anybody at the magic center since our discussion and our request for cleanup and stringing up and organizing?
No, I have not. Have you?
I have.
Oh, okay, I just don't need.
I'm just asking that.
I will tell you that I did refund somebody's rental deposit that had it in December. I met with him today and he actually showed me pictures, um, when he, when they got in there for the rental and so I refunded his.
Pictures, yeah.
Not, it not being cleaned. And so I did refund his money to him, um, for that rental. They have rented it every year for I don't know how many years in a row. And so I was very disappointed, um, by the pictures that I seen and so.
Who was the responsibility, they're supposed to be cleaning for that?
Well, I mean, I'm sure CHOPS who we are, but also some of it, I think, is through the real services, that it's not being cleaned, like microwave the ovens, uh.
They're not doing their part.
So.
So have we officially, we didn't officially renew those contracts, did we?
We did CHOPS last month.
CHOPS, but I'm talking about real.
We didn't do anything with real services, we haven't done anything.
Or anybody else that's been up there.
Nope. Nothing else, nothing else was addressed about that after we had that discussion last fall.
What the picture, would you share those with us?
You know what, he did, I can ask him to send it to me, he just had him on his phone, he's an older gentleman, so. Um, he just shared them with Macy and I today. But I could reach out to him and see if he could forward them to him.
Yeah, no way, we would have a visual.
Okay.
Is, is this something that we need to have the real service person come in here?
I would agree with that.
And, and sit down to, hey, look.
Yeah, I would say at this point, yeah, we're trying to, slowly trying to do upgrades on the building as we can. And support you, obviously. But on the, the other side of this, I don't think it's just real services, you know, we talked about other individuals.
Oh, I get that.
And I think we need to, I think we need to sit down and come up with a hard contract and make a decision on how we're going to handle it. That's what my opinion.
Oh, we've got to start somewhere. And I think obviously, we've already had the issue with real services thinking that way longer than what the normal is.
Right, and I'm not against the real.
Oh, I know their mind.
By any means, it's just, it's just a matter of expectation, that their expectation and our expectation apparently aren't matching. I mean, they, they had complaints, we had complaints, so maybe it's time for us to.
Sit down and all show up at the point.
Anything else, Joe? Uh, the only thing I just want to thank everybody, it's a new year. Um, appreciate everybody's efforts, especially in today's economy and, um, ethics in, in the world. Uh, and for employees, uh, remember the big party appreciation on the eighteenth. Make sure you dance your way there.
I was going to say, are you?
Yeah, I have to, I have to, he's the boss.
He's dancing along. Why are you?
I'm not dancing along, I'm dancing with my boss.
So?
Thank you for that.
That's all I have.
I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I'll second that.